And it was affirmed.
It was on me with one of the taxpayers.
I have a gender request item with your signature on it. I promise not to release it.
I started, I just went live.
Are we?
No, no. Good evening and welcome to our council and committee of the whole meeting for October 1st. I will open this evening by having Chancellor Palaigre read our landing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We want to take some time to honor the importance of the territory on which we are gathered. The municipality of West Nipissing recognizes with respect that we are reunited on the ancestral land of Nishabey, on the traditional territory of the First Nations Nipissing, in Marami, Hidokus, designated by the treaty of Bensong Uram. We honor the historical ties with the territory and we value their contribution to the advancement and reinforcement of our communities. In doing so, we reaffirm our engagement and our responsibility to reconsider and ameliorate our understanding of the local people and their culture.
Yes, see. Any declarations of peculiar interest this evening? Seeing none, we have no addendum, so we'll move to without the agenda.
It is moved by Council Rivard and seconded by Council Gonye. Be it resolved that the agenda for the council and committee of the whole meeting held on October 1st, 2024 be adopted as presented.
Questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. We have no delegations or petitions this evening, so we'll move directly into committee of the whole. 5.1 General Government, and the first item there is delegated authorities by law. There is a staff report in your package, and for an overview, I will pass the floor to Mr. Barble.
Actually, Your Worship, Mr. Charm has provided the information, so she can provide the... Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think most of the information that would be pertinent is in the staff report. However, it is a required bylaw for all municipalities to have pursuant to the municipal act. It was also highlighted in the report from Municipal Affairs and Housing when they did an overview of our policies and procedures, that the municipality didn't have one. As I indicated, we have a variety of bylaws where there's authority delegated to the CIO, the treasurer, the fire chief, and many other, myself included, but they're kind of piecemeal. So what a delegated authority by law will do is bring all of those into one place for reference purposes, as well as delegate such other duties and authorities that council may wish in addition to the ones that are already delegated by laws. That's pretty much the crux of what such a bylaw is. And I have reached out to other staff members to determine what things that they think might go into such a bylaw that are routine in nature, that could be potentially brought into the delegated authorities by law for consideration at council.
Excellent. Thank you very much. There are some members who work here when we did receive the report from MMAH that stemmed from the issues from the last term of council. I will ask the clerk to send that report to Chancellor Larabee and Chancellor Ferran, just so they can have a copy of the MMAH report, so you know what's being referred to there. Thank you very much. When was the municipal... Do you know when the municipal was updated to require a delegated authorities by law?
I can't actually tell you. Within probably the last two years.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so what would be the next steps as far as the process? Would a report more, full some report come back that would kind of list all the different things for a formal bylaw? Further discussion?
To you, Madam Mayor, what we would typically do is go through our existing bylaws to determine what authorities are delegated to which municipal officers, and just make a list of those, because that would be part of the schedule. As I said before, reach out to other directors and managers for advice or input on what they think they may wish to have included, and then bring back a list of the proposed new delegated authorities for council's consideration.
Questions or comments from other members of council? I have one more question. Thought I was taking over there. When the delegated authorities by law is then created, the delegated authorities still remain within the home bylaw, so as well as being referenced?
Absolutely. It doesn't change the validity of the original bylaw. It's really just sort of catch-all document.
Okay, so for delegated authorities that already exist within bylaws, it would just be referenced to bylaw number blah, 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 blah. For new delegated authorities which are not covered, say council decided to do, say, noise exemptions, would changes then be made to the noise exemption bylaw? Or would the noise exemption delegation of authority be contained only within the delegation of authority?
Within the delegation of authority law.
So the noise bylaw would not change to reflect? Okay. I just wanted to get kind of an idea of what the process was there. I'll ask one more time, any other questions? So staffs are looking for council direction to proceed with putting together a more formal report on what the delegation authority bylaw would look like and bring back for further discussion at a future committee of the whole. So she has shown hands for staff to proceed with that. So that's clear. Thank you very much. I thank you very much for doing the report and giving the information, and the links that were provided for reference for... We're very good, so thank you. The next item on our agenda for this evening is a CIO evaluation process. So quite a few months ago, maybe April or May, this was brought to council and committee of the whole. And, you know, it had been identified that there hadn't been a formal evaluation done on our CIO, nor a framework for that evaluation process. Mr. Barble is... I'm trying to put this there, right? Is looking forward to taking his retirement sometime in the near future. And so council at that time thought it was a pretty important document to put together, so that we have the framework that establishes kind of how we evaluate the CIO and how that relationship is managed for the future when we are looking at a new CIO in the chair. So that's how that began. There was a subcommittee forum that consisted of Counselor Gonye, Counselor Restool, Counselor Tessier, and myself, and we worked with Madam Craddock to review some documents from the organization... The CMA? Okay. And come up with what we thought would be a good policy. So this is kind of what's been done to date within that subcommittee, and it's being brought back to council for review and feedback, and to see where we go from here on the process. Did you want to speak to it any further?
No, thanks as is it?
Yeah. So the report is there. Other questions or comments from some councillors on this item?
But he did a good job, then.
I guess so. No, I, you know, like there is a proposed policy included within your package. There's quite a bit of information there. If council doesn't have anything to add or any... Counselor Restool, thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to say I appreciate the support and assistance that we received from Ms. Craddock in putting this together and drafting this. And I appreciate Counselor Gonye and former Counselor Tessier and yourself working together to get this in place. It seemed a little troubling to me that we didn't have this in place previously, and putting in the work to get this important piece of... This important document in place, I thought was good. And I'm glad to see that council so far seems to be okay with what we put together and put in place. So looking forward to using the tool in the future to do the assessment or evaluation for our CIO. And also just wanted to say belated happy birthday to our CIO.
Yes. Thank you. Happy birthday, Mr. Barble.
That's just not... That's not right.
Very inappropriate. But actually, happy birthday, Mr. Barble.
I gotta ask somebody about Facebook and how to eliminate those people.
Thank you very much, Counselor Restool. It was an interesting process. And, you know, like there was really big materials to read. I think that, if I can say so, the subcommittee did a good job. Any other questions or comments on this document? I, Council Vani.
Madam Mayor, just for information for the councillors here, we've also requested that we do a trial and evaluation with Monsieur Babu, and he has agreed to that process. As a functional to have his feedback on, did he appreciate the process? Like, is it like kind of a professional and so on? So that's going to be interesting to actually go through that process. And since Monsieur Babu is actually taking his retirement eventually, not too far from there.
You tell people all the time.
We'll be able to get some concrete feedback from the current CIO for our next CIO once we get to that bridge across it. Thank you.
And I agree to it?
Yes.
Wow. I guess it is time for me to retire.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. But it was a good point is that, you know, like to have the input of the CIO as to how the process is from the perspective of the employer is going to be really important as well. Mr. Barble?
Thank you, Your Worship. What I liked about it, and it is a well-done document, what I like about it, obviously, is it does provide formality that didn't exist. We had an evaluation that was fairly extensive about three terms ago. And what our informal policy was, was after the end of budget of the third or fourth year. So that allowed council to, you know, to have a good feel for who they are in the term. But I believe adding one at the end of the first year provides a benchmark for the third year as well. So I think that that's an excellent, that's an excellent framework, and I think that will serve you well.
Thank you. I do agree. I think if council, if future councils do as we have done, and in the first couple of months establish a term plan to set a... To kind of have that meeting after term plan is completed, so that the goals of the council are clear at the beginning of the term, within year one, and have a repeat of the process. Year three really kind of sets the tone and makes sure that both council and administration are moving together towards, towards both the organizations. So, yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Barble. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so with that, Alisa, next steps? I'm sorry, Ms. Craddock.
So we can bring the policy back, so for resolution in the next meeting. And then if you, you know, if the CIO is volunteering to actually go through a, you know, go through it in kind of as a mock trial, we can certainly, we can certainly set that up as well. But yeah, we'll bring it back for resolution at the next meeting, so it'll become a firm policy then.
Should I be mock-stressed?
Definitely.
The mock, will it be done within the subcommittee, like the members that were there? Or would it be done? Because it is a subcommittee that does the evaluations, right?
Yeah, I thought the CIO was volunteering to review it. If he's actually volunteering to go through a whole mock process, then certainly we can keep that at the subcommittee.
Okay.
Well, through you, through you, Your Worship. We're against a little bit, not for me, but advising council is. Oftentimes you can set a subcommittee, but I believe all councillors are elected equally, and I think that they need to have a certain amount of input with respect to that. And my employer is nine people, not three or four. So I can provide you an assessment to go through it, and then we can provide a report back on a mock basis with the subcommittee. But just so that you're aware that any evaluation should be done. I don't know that I would recommend delegating that to... To, I know that, you know, municipalities have now strong mayor powers in certain areas, but I'm concerned about that, given proper democracy, proper governance and recent history, that all of council as a body corporate are involved equally in the evaluation of their employees.
Yeah. And nowadays, the mayor as well, so. So it will come back at the next meeting. Okay, well, thank you, members. Before I close the session, any other questions, comments on this item? Thank you. Well, that was easy. We do have one item under our emergency measures and public safety committee. For that, I will pass it to our new chair, Counselor Larabee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item under open air burning by law. And with this, I'll pass it on to our director of emergency services, our fire chief, Frank Luther.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Currently, the municipality does not have an open air burn by law in place. We do issue permits. Residents, anything larger than a campfire, do come pick up permits for the most part. However, in the event that the fire gets out of control, out of hand, the mechanisms for invoicing, the mechanisms for enforcement are limited. I've gone through and established a open air burning by law, which is part of the regulations under the forest, or sorry, the Fire Protections and Prevention Act. We can establish control over open air burning. It's a lengthy bylaw. If council has any questions. Also within it, and we're just waiting for approval from the solicitors, the Part I tickets, as well as the invoicing for us to go and extinguish fires within our municipal boundaries. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Is there any comments or questions for this bylaw for the chief? Floor is open. I guess we're all in agreement with what the chief is proposing.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I think other municipalities have something similar to this. I actually always thought we did have a bylaw for this, so it's kind of neat that we're going to create one now. And I think it's similar to, you know, when I made that mistake about the dog registration thing. I think this would be a good opportunity there to just bring up that, you know, an education piece too, to try and get it out to people that if they need to obtain a permit to come to town hall to get a permit. I've always thought that there's been a lack there, because I know quite a few people who do that. And every time I mention it, they're all like, ah, you don't need a permit to burn unless you're burning something very large. But from what I've learned is it's pretty much anything bigger than a small fire.
Thank you, Council of All.
Once you're not a set councillor here, but in the absence of this bylaw for the last, you know, we've gone through a few chiefs, and we've been enforcing. Are we enforcing under the act then, under the Fire Protection Prevention Act? In the absence of the bylaw, how are we issuing a permit without a bylaw?
So through you, Mr. Chair. Our established regulated bylaw did have a portion within it requesting or requiring the permits, as well as invoicing for us to go and extinguish the fire.
So it was, it was there, just not under a directed bylaw?
Not under its own bylaw, and as well as not defined as this bylaw. So through Madam Clerk, we've gone through this and evaluated it. I believe we have something substantial that at least people will have clear direction to what they're, what they're burning, what they're permitted to, what they're not permitted to.
Thank you, Chief. I do have a question. I remember years ago, we used to have a distribution of permits in every community. Is this going to keep moving forward?
So we do have the district chiefs that do issue them throughout the municipality. It's not something that has been done extensively over the past unless somebody was asking for it. So the intention is, yes, with this being in place, that at least now there's clear direction again to what requires the permits, what doesn't require the permits, when individuals are allowed to burn, when they're not allowed to burn. And that'll clarify for the district chiefs as well if we are permitting the permits outside.
And the residents will be aware of what you just mentioned? What they can burn and what they cannot burn?
Yeah.
Painted wood, that's a no-no, or?
Painted wood, cardboard, paper, leaves, grass, all that stuff is not permitted, because the ambers that have tendency to float away in windy days like today.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. I think Counselor Rivard made a very good point. In when a new bylaw like this is being established, the importance of a communication plan so that residents are aware of what the rules are is very important, especially if there are changes or if there are things that will impact them and in general won't be well-known. So, you know, I would hope that there'll be some kind of either information sheet or perhaps a page on the website, or a little bit of both on the fire services website that does give kind of information in a more user-friendly way than in the bylaw itself as to what is permitted and what the process is for permitting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just... Counselor Vadi?
Just wondering, is there a lot of changes compared to before to what's bringing now?
So through you, Mr. Chair, there's not a lot of changes as to the rules that were being implemented in the past. It's just the bylaw now clarifies the regulations pertaining to open air burning.
So it's going to be, I guess, in a way stricter to get caught. It might cost you a nice penny. Often, we advertise this, that we would take just a little piece of the tribune, because say the computers and all this, there's a lot of people that don't go there.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we will probably communicate it in a regular way. But one of the things, and one of the benefits that the fire department have is with their district chiefs and their volunteers. So there might be an opportunity to do a public education piece and a one-on-one piece for those who'd like to, you know, meet people in person and have a clear understanding. But there's really no increase in the penalties, other than having it consolidated and documented. Certainly will ensure that our communication strategy is consistent with everything.
Thank you, CEO. I, I, every community has a fire station, which there's eight all around. So yes, it would be just a matter of getting our call to station fire chief to get a public meeting in their community and let people know. But I was always under the impression that we did have that bylaw. So it's, now, now there's going to be a fight.
So through you, Mr. Chair, again, Madam Clerk and myself did a search to see if there was anything established. There wasn't anything other than in the established and regulated bylaw. Dan, it's your counselor, Pennington's question. Nothing's really changing other than the fact that now we have a document that says if you don't follow these rules and something happens and we're there, these are the costs that are associated with it.
Madam Mayor? Speaking of costs or fines, there is no fine schedule attached to this. Is that, does that come at a later date? Will that sit within the bylaw, or does that sit within a different piece of legislation because of fire management?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the set fines that we have established have to be reviewed by the solicitor in order to be able to stand up in court if it goes to court, and it relates to the bylaw. The fees for response, that's also been added, and Madam Clerk can elaborate on that a little bit more. But basically, it's MTL rates, current MTL rates is what we charge for responding per charge.
Sorry, may I ask one more follow-up question, please? And are the, the set fines are POA? And they can't, is that something that could fall under ANSS program if, or again, once it's established?
It can. It can. If council wishes to, I know that right now, three members, sorry. I know that we've been given direction to, for a certain number of bylaws for the, I guess.
This one too.
This one too?
Yeah, it was on the list.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so when the, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. When this, when this bylaw comes back for council approval, then there will be a fine schedule attached to it as well? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Keith, for your presentation. Looking forward to get all the documentation and everything else. Again, thank you. And back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We move to item 5.3, our Community Services Committee, and I will pass the floor to Councilor Rovard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Lane has provided us a very memo regarding the Community Sport Recreation Infrastructure Fund. Pretty much with the memo saying is there's two different streams. The first stream, maximum, where we can get a million dollars, up to 50% of a project. And for stream one, they request a few different options. It's a recommendation to move forward with the Phase One of the Western Sydney Recreation Modernization Project Recreation Center. And then there's also Stream Two, which is later, later on, because Stream One shows that the, the deadline is October 29th, which is pretty soon. So I guess we have to get going on that one. And Stream Two is upwards to $10 million, covering 50% of a project. But that one is more for a later date. So we were going to get some more info from staff at a later date. But I'll pass it over to Lane if there's any more info that you want to add.
I think, Mr. Chair, you summarized it very well. The information provided is the headlines that have been provided to us by the ministry. And we're looking for council direction on if you wish to proceed with an application. And if you do, we are recommending the fitness center and pool, Phase One modernization, which would almost maximize the allowable contribution from the province. Or if council wishes to proceed with other projects. But this is what we feel gives us the best option to get funding from the province. And it's an immediate need as well. It's identified in our building condition assessment. So we'll require upgrades in the near future. Program meets those guidelines.
Thank you. We won't speak to Stream Two too much tonight, I imagine.
Again, Stream Two, we are going to come back to you, Mr. Chair, going to come back to council in, in, in short order. We are working at getting some accurate costing for some of the projects that have been brought forth to council. I've listed those in there, you know, outside basketball courts, a multi-use indoor facility. We're looking at an outdoor permanent pickleball facility. And those are for new sports fields or recreational facilities. So Stream Two, there is no deadline for application, but the intake is open until the money runs out. I do want to, you know, advise council that a $200 million fund for the entire province is not a lot of money. Every municipality has a, a sporting facility or recreational facility. So that $200 million fund is, I'm not sure how much of the demand it's going to meet, but if we don't put our, our best foot forward, we won't know. I was also advised that if the municipality does not submit an application, and then we would go to, let's say, the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund for support for a sports facility, by not submitting an application to this fund, they wouldn't consider our requests. So it's important that we do submit an application.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. I'll open the floor. Any questions?
So, Stream Two, the burn room is still building with, under that?
No. They have to be, through you, Mr. Chair, they have to be sports or recreational facility. The main purpose of the building has to be sports or recreation, not administrative or otherwise. It has to be a focus on sports and recreation.
So the exercise room would not?
It's not the main purpose of the building. Yeah. Councilor Henry?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So several months ago, I had brought forward looking at a asphalt pad in cash bay for whether pickleball or basketball. So that would fall under Stream Two if we were to move forward.
Correct.
However, if we're looking at that in a couple of years from now or whatnot, is that something, though, that we can look at as a council as opposed to going through this grant process?
Mr. Chair, the information we've provided to council, and we had stated that it would become part of your budget deliberation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So do you mention the Stream Two is open currently or will be open? So the faster we can put our application, the better chance we might have of being accepted.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? The outline of the different work required at, at the recreational complex. Are there any of those projects like the AODA that may be funded under other provincial or federal programs? And I guess what I'm asking is, like, does it all have to be, because I think we need to be clear, if we apply for $1.875 million, council still needs to come up with $937,000 to pay 40%, share. So, you know, let's say we didn't look at the elevator because the elevator could be funding, funded under a different project that may have a higher ratio of funding. So that, that's kind of what I'm trying to get an idea of, is that if there's other programs, or perhaps even federal programs that would cover parts of the work that we're doing, that we could stack, because we can stack with federal programs, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we, yeah. So they say no other provincial funding can be stacked with this project. To my knowledge, there aren't, other than the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund currently, there aren't any programs that specifically will address AODA as part of a standalone project. Some will address AODA like this program here as part of a larger scope.
Okay.
In discussion with our consultant architects, it just, we just felt that if we'd be successful with this project, that while we're in construction mode, we would try to get all AODA and all modernization or upgrades done, because it is going to be extensive. So we're looking at, you know, having better accessibility to our change rooms, our fitness center, our pool. And the elevator in that building is, is original. So it is at its life expectancy where it does require some significant upgrades.
And what year was the recreation complex built, please?
It started, it was a fire, so I would say it was probably finalized around 95, 94, 95.
Towards our 30th year, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, well, sorry, Councilor Restol.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, I, I support moving ahead with this. I know we, we can look at it from a lens to say, yeah, there is 50% that we're responsible for. But the other side of the lens is that there's 50% that we're not responsible for. I think, given a lot of the financial situation at the province and at the feds, and coming out of COVID and the costs associated with that, there's an opportunity to get 50% on the dollar, which we much needed upgrades to something as critical and important within the community as the recreation center. I think we should be pursuing it for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Restol. So if there's nobody else, I'd just like, pretty much what Councilor Restol said is, what I was thinking, that if we can gather that 900,000, 950,000, or, I like the idea of going for a project near the $2 million mark, because then you get to maximize that Stream One as well. Hey, if you can get a million dollars, well, we'll just have to work hard to find that million dollars elsewhere. But if it's something maintaining facility that we currently have to extend the lifespan, if we've enjoyed it for 30 years, I don't know if anyone's been there lately, but it's starting to look a little old in there, some of the stuff. So it would be nice to bring that up to speed. And then we'd have it for another 20, 30, maybe the way things are built now, to last even longer, I don't know, or maybe less. But it would just be really nice and a good thing for our community. And then Stream Two, you can always look at at a later date and decide on what we'd like to go for there. But I really like the recommendation of the pool and fitness center to maintain what we currently have instead of continuing to add new, give cost to that as well. So, thanks for the discussion. And I'd like to, I guess, from consent, it, it looks as though we agree with going forward with this fund. And the other aspect I'd like to point out is, I really liked when you mentioned that we wouldn't even be able to apply for other grants if we didn't do this. So that kind of says right there, we should, we should go for this. I'm going to show hands, I guess. Thank you. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you again to staff for the report on that. We now move to 5.4, which is our Environmental Services Committee. And I will pass the floor to our Chair, Councilor McCall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We received a memo updating us on the status of the Blue Box transition part, period. And I will pass it to Ms. Kradek to give us a little bit of more of a summary, because I think she can explain it better than I can.
Thank you. So council may remember, it was earlier this year, we brought a report to council, to council, looking at whether we wanted to participate or continue to participate in the transition period of the, the Blue Box period. So we, we transitioned July 1st, 2025, and the transition period runs to December 1st, 2025. And we'd done a sort of financial analysis at the time, and we were going to lose money on the, the, the deal. And it was only for the transition period, so it didn't make a lot of sense. And council opted out of continuing to provide the, the services during the transition period. So Circular Materials came back to us recently, kind of said, would you reconsider? And with, you know, some of the logistics of having Blue Box depots continuing to operate at landfill sites kind of just makes sense, rather than them having to find other locations and, and other contractors to, to run that. So they came back, and they came back with actually a little bit better proposal as well. So it would, so I'm looking for, for councils kind of reversing your, your prior position. In this, it would be for the Blue Box depot operations, so not any of the curb site collection. The curb site collection is still going out to a contractor. It's just for the depot operations in that July to December period. They're still going to be responsible for the hauling. So it's just that we would have our staff who are at the, the, the landfill sites continue to make sure that the snow is cleared in front of the, the recycle bins, that their, that their hauler can get in and, and get to the bins. We have a couple unmanned sites, and so we would continue that. And we are still, we're doing maintenance on those sites now, just continue that kind of maintenance to make sure that, again, that the sites stay clean and, and that our, their hauler can get into, to move the, the Blue Box material. Since memo, though, they did come back to us, there's a sample agreement that I put there, they did come back to us at the end of the week, last week, and said that the compensation is $2,400 per month for all depots. In addition to that, there's going to be another, about $9,000 a year for education and things like that that would kind of go along with it. And again, we don't have any of the, the hauling costs. We don't have any of that. It's about double what they were offering the first go-round on things. So this way does, it actually does make sense. And it's just sort of a little bit of extra income into our stream, while at the same time keeping the logical flow of Blue Box and, and the landfill sites together. Just as a heads up to council, just so you know, you know, we are going to have to come back in the very near future and have some discussions about non-eligible Blue Box materials, both in our depots and at our, at our curb side, just so that we get ready for that post-transition stuff, because those non-eligible sources cannot be mixed past December 31st, 2025. So just, we'll have probably Blue Box conversations a little bit over the next little while, just to, to kind of get some of these things so that we're ready for July 1st next year, and then right, ready for December 31st next year as well. But this was just one piece that if, if council agrees in maintaining the depots at our sites for now, we'll bring the, the full contract with all the bits filled in at the next, the next council meeting for, for some of them.
Mr. Perbel?
If I can add, just from a human perspective, it, it also, you know, the decision we made was a financial one for sure. And, but I think that, you know, the way and the improvements we've made in recycling at the residential level in our rural areas, rural and remote areas is great, but it took a lot of time in the transition to have and educate the public on the fact that that won't exist after January 1. I think it buys us an additional six months to work with our residents in smoothing, smoothing, that's not a word, and smooth over the, you know, the, the change that folks are getting used to. So I'm, you know, I think it's a revenue-neutral thing, and I think it, it makes sense from an operational perspective for our residents.
The $9,000 you mentioned for education materials, is that revenue that comes into the municipality to then conduct education, you know, reach out? Or is it $9,000 that that company spends to reach out to outreach? Or is it nine thousand dollars that that company spends to reach out to our residents? I do, just trying to.
No, it comes into us for while that, yep, so that it's our reach out while we're operating the, the depots, yes.
Okay, and that nine thousand, uh, dollar budget for that education, um, would that then go back through the environmental services board to determine how that communication is done, or would that be done by municipal staff?
It's municipal.
Recycling is municipal.
Okay.
The contractor we use is environmental, but, uh, it's this body corporate.
Any other questions or comments? Council friend?
Chair, through you, um, so, just so I'm clear on this, um, so for the, for the transition period, for example, people could continue to bring their recycling to one of the landfill centers, and they could continue, for example, to use recycling, uh, bins at Werner Arena. Um, and after the transition period, is, is it possible that we would continue under a different agreement to do the same thing, or is it going to move away to something entirely different?
Through you, Madam Chair, post-transition, um, anyone who's getting curb-side garbage, um, through the municipality or one of the municipality's contractors right now, will get curb-side Blue Box. So that impacts, so those folks out in Crystal Falls and, and things like that, so that's, that unmanned one will have less, North Monetville, they've got some curb-side going on down there, so those folks will all get curb-side Blue Box, um, automatically. As far as what happens at the depots at our rural sites, um, that's actually gonna be a bit more of a discussion with Council and with the, the contractor, uh, and there's some options we have. So they, they've sort of indicated that it's unlikely that they'll want to maintain depots at all of our sites. However, we have the ability of having some negotiations with them, we've got some ability as far as how we deliver services, um, we're, we're looking at a few things that will come as we start to head into budget for this year, so that there are some, some alternatives that we may be able to provide better service for our residents, but it's a little bit uncertain as far as that post-transition, because you folks have got some decisions that you'll, you'll, that will bring to you to make in the time in between as well.
Uh, so follow-up, please, three. So, is it possible then that some of the, um, more rural ward will lose the ability to bring their, um, and I'm referring to, to Ward Eight, for example, uh, what if we can no longer bring our recycling, uh, to the Levine landfill and the bins at Werner Arena are gone? Is it possible that we're gonna end up in a situation where, um, we'll have more difficulty to recycle?
It's gonna be, uh, saying, that's what we're trying to avoid, is that it moves, that it becomes difficult. So they, they, they do recognize that we are geographically very large, and that their usual calculations doesn't work in rural municipalities such as ourselves, um, and then, like I said, yeah, Mr. Bob.
Theoretically, Council FED, uh, the possibility exists when you're changing a service provider that is wanting to, is efficient, uh, as, as they wanna be, but as, uh, Ms. Kratic indicated, we have a long history, uh, since amalgamation of trying to evolve and create recycling. We've actually, uh, done a pretty good job in the metrics, uh, it, uh, for recycling, and it certainly would not be our intention in discussions with them to, uh, lessen the service with respect to the rural areas, and so we will, we know that's going to be the issue. And, and so, yeah, we're not, uh, an urban municipality, and they're gonna have to recognize that, so that is something that we will be, uh, discussing with them. And if the province says that, uh, it's passed a law that says the producer are now responsible for it in the province of Ontario, well, they're responsible for it in Ward Eight, Ward Six, Ward Five, uh, and Ward Seven as well, and so we'll certainly be passing that message along, and if we get any hiccups, uh, as soon as we do, we'll be coming back to Council to discuss what, uh, what strategies we have, so.
Thank you.
Council, did you have any?
Yeah.
Uh, Council Larry?
I'll go after.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, my question would be, once it, uh, uh, we move to the contractor, uh, will, will our resident be charged for the recycling, or is it the, so our resident should be getting a, a discount on their, uh, on their bill? Because it's, it's, it will be, uh, the manufacturers that will pick up the cap?
Uh, potentially, but we've had, uh, offset revenues with respect to recycling in Ontario as well, so typically in your recycling, uh, we've had markets for recycling, uh, and so, uh, to do that calculation in this year, uh, might be a little bit problematic, and I think that it wouldn't necessarily be, uh, what you think, that your, your, your residents are paying for a base, uh, management of a landfill, uh, base landfill fee, then depending on your levels of service, they're paying for, uh, either door-to-door pickup or additional landfill, and that's how your rates are, but your recycling is never factored in, uh, that much. We can do the analysis, Council, uh, that'd be, but in, in my opinion, uh, if there is a cost savings in our budget, let's say, um, we have bought some, uh, C containers, so it wouldn't be necessarily in this year, uh, or next year's budget, but in the year after, if those C containers we no longer pay for and that kind of thing, then technically our budget will reflect it. Uh, and our user fees are typically driven by what it costs us to run the business, and then we have user fees, so if it costs us less to run the business, then Council, all other things being equal, that will drive, uh, the, uh, the, the fee downwards. But with respect to recycling, like we say, there's additional revenues that can be to play.
Also figured out, follow-up, yeah, now you said that they will be bringing changes to the, uh, uh, what could be recycled. Did they, did they have, uh, do they know what the change, or, the staff know the changes they're bringing?
Uh, no, so during the transition period, what we currently recycle stays in that, so that, that July to December, um, thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, um, after, after that period, um, with a goal of kind of standardizing recycling across the, the province, but there are some, some legislative pieces that they, that they can't get away from, so there is a lot built into the legislation so that the producers can't sort of wiggle out of accepting, um, products, and I, I think you, you're seeing different stuff at the stores already, and it's a kind of, because someone's already changed and they're just getting ready for the, the whole transition of things, um, but that there is sort of this goal of sort of standardizing, um, across the province in, in twenty twenty-six and beyond, um, which I think probably really is gonna mean a, a win for our residents, because there's certainly a lot that happens other places that we don't have here yet.
If, I'm, I, if it's, uh, if it's, uh, uh, cost neutral, then I'm, I'm in favor of it, our, our staff at, at the municipal dump site, they're all trained to, to handle this talent, so, uh, I wouldn't have any problem if it's, uh, cost neutral. Thank you.
Council Gony?
Thank you, Madam Chair. How many box depots do we have in West Nippis? Do we know?
We do know. Um, once, it's actually eleven sites.
And then we have three, so probably eight. If you're looking at the landfill sites, you're looking at Levine, you're looking at Werner, you're looking at Kipling, River Valley, uh, yeah, Field and Musqueson, there's six. And then you have your site in, uh, in Field, you have your site in Crystal Falls, and your site in, uh, in Werner, so that's nine. Nine sites, uh, and then containers that are there, as you know, there's a container for, uh, cardboard, and then there's containers for aluminum and cans and plastic, so.
There is a, in many?
No.
And we have some at the dump sites too, that you can also bring your recycling there? Is that included with the?
I referred to that in the, yeah.
Okay. And are we gonna get a costing of, if we do maintain that temporarily six months, we'll use guys come back with a costing? What actually is gonna cost us to kind of maintain, remove the snow, uh, because we're looking at nine sites to, to, to actually just even remove the snow for even a short period of time?
We're already doing it.
For you, they're removing the snow anyway, so they're removing the snow to the dump so that people can use the dump on, uh, Saturdays or Sundays or, or what have you, so nothing really changes that way, and then the, uh, landfill attendant will go and remove, uh, he's already paid for, will remove and ensure that, you know, when you're plowing near a C container, so that, that cost is really minimal, Council Gony.
Okay, but I was more thinking of like Crystal Falls, it's like in the middle of nowhere, so they'll have to send a guy there to remove that snow with a pickup truck, so.
We typically have that as part of our public works runs now, so, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it is a full cost.
You know, to do that in a couple seconds, we'll turn in, now that kind of thing.
Yep. Good, yeah. Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Um, when we initially discussed this, it was less than a year ago, is that correct?
It was, yeah, I think March, earlier this year.
Okay, and at that time, was the decision not to, uh, participate done via a resolution of councils? So then, in order for us to change that, we would need somebody to make a motion to reconsider, is that the way that, I'm, I'm just asking procedurally, um, because the decision was made by council in order for us to reverse a decision of council, there would have to be, uh.
Right. A motion to reconsider.
A motion to reconsider by a prevailing member, and it would need to pass by?
Two thirds.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on what the procedure was, uh, because it was a decision of council. Thank you.
Put forward that motion, check this.
We're in committee right now, so.
So I, I think we'll probably go to next meeting. Is that, or do we have a resolution?
We don't have a resolution this time, no.
Yeah, so we can do that for, for next meeting, um, and I'm sure we'll have, it might have to be done more formally as a mover and acceptor, because it has to be prevailing member, and, but anyhow, so it will bring the resolution, uh, forward, but it does need to, I'll just remind Council that for us to change the decision, it will need to pass by two thirds.
Question, Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Chair, if I can be allowed another quick follow-up, can you expand on what non-eligible source materials are?
Stuff that's not, um, residential.
Oh, so it's not, things that are not recycled?
There's, there's, um, there's, there's two things that they kind of adjust for, um, one is when there is, um, sort of garbage that appears into our, our, into the recycling stream, um, but the, the big concern is the non-eligible source, which is, um, commercial recycling, anything that is not residential recycling. Um, you know, they, they, they're gonna accept it, we're gonna get charged for it in the transition period, and then post-transition, um, it's not permitted into the residential Blue Box stream, so that is a discussion that we will have to have at Council about how you wanna approach non-eligible sources. Um, our solid waste and, and Director of Infrastructure are quite terrified about the thought of, um, commercial cardboard suddenly ending up in all of our landfill sites, but it is a discussion that we'll need to have at Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just so I'm clear, so it all depends if, uh, how do I say that? The, the, the garbage is not going where it's supposed to be, if there's too much garbage in the recycling, it's at the discretion that they, they charge us back, right?
So there, there's, there's two bits, so that if there's a lot of garbage ending up in the recycling, and they'll have the, the context for how much that is, then we get, um, then if, if there's too much garbage ending up in the recycling, then they come and have a chat with us as far as, um, what we're doing with education and what our landfill attendants are doing as far as screening the stuff and going in and things like that, um, we get charged for the, the commercial, the assumption of commercial amounts going into the Blue Box stream.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, it does get confusing, so the, the commercial materials will be accepted, but there is some kind of calculation that's done that the municipality then has to reimburse the contractor for that service, so it's not that, it, it's not that recycling is not going to be available to commercial clients, it's just that it's a different.
So between the.
I'm sorry, it's, it's.
No, so we will, we will be, no, it's, it is, but we are also then, it, it, it does involve the more stringent, uh, or attentive, uh, observation by our attendants, and so there will be obviously some training, uh, that will have to go into it, and having landfill attendants manage these, uh, recycling areas in a different way, where we're gonna run into the problems and the limitations will then be in Levine, Field, and, uh, Crystal Falls, and what we do with that, I suppose. So we're gonna try and limit it, but yeah, if, to the degree that we can, but if we can, we will be judged.
Madam Chair, um, again, well, on that subject, so, so currently, what happens with commercial, for example, businesses that produce a lot of cardboard? Um, do they have to pay to have it recycled themselves, and, and how would that kind of commercial recycling end up in a residential Blue Box?
So right now, in Sturgeon Falls, we actually have a little recycling run that we do that hits the main commercial, sort of along Front Street and a little bit of, of downtown, um, and so it's actually, um, we're not charging the businesses for it right now, it is part of our solid waste, um, budget that, that's sort of taken care of, so the municipality is sort of funding the, the Blue Box on the, the commercial. In our, um, rural landfills, right now it's just going into the same stream, um, based on information that, it doesn't sound like, it sounds like there's just sort of a, a few lodges that are, are bringing stuff into the, the rural landfills, we don't have a lot of commercial going into our, our rural landfills, um, but it is gonna be a consideration post-December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, for both, both streams are, are gonna be a consideration for, for Council over the next year to get ready for, for that period on, on whether you're gonna continue to offer Blue Box recycling for commercial, and if you're gonna continue to, if Council's gonna continue to offer it, is it for fee or not for fee, and, and how are you gonna do it?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Another issue we'll be faced with if, if there is some mix-up in the recycling is, uh, we've experienced that, uh, there is access to our municipal dump when it's closed, so, and I hear it all the time, you know, well, that wasn't there when I, when I left, uh, Wednesday, you know, our dumps open Wednesday, or Sunday, somebody went in, so that will also generate, uh, probably, uh, increase and, or a decrease in funds from the, from the recyclers, so, yeah, that's one thing we'll have to face.
We were lucky, we were lucky on an enforcement, uh, file, uh, last week, so, uh, hopefully a message will get around that somebody was charged, uh, so, yeah, it, it has, it's been a problem.
Years.
And it isn't a commercial issue, uh, it's just an issue of people breaking into our dumps, uh, we have, to your point, Counselor, and this is a little off-topic, but we, we have centralized our electronics for that reason, we took them out of landfills and we centralized them to Werner, and that seems to have alleviated, uh, a lot of, uh, the problem, not all of it though.
Thank you.
Do you have any?
Just a check with the staff, did you need any specific directions? So we're gonna come back with the resolutions, and we'll work out the, uh, the procedural part of that between now and then. Thank you very much, uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, so that brings us to the end of our committee of the whole, uh, section for this evening. Uh, we will move to item six in our regular meeting, Madam Chair. Sorry, we caught you by surprise.
It is moved by Council Gony and seconded by Council Rivas. It resolved the consent agenda for the council and committee, the hold meeting held on October the first, twenty twenty-four, be approved as presented.
Any questions or comments, any consent agenda? All in favor? Okay, uh, we have nothing under planning, corresponding, uh, correspondence or under finished business. Okay, we have nothing under planning corresponding, correspondence or under营业 business. 6.5 new business, 6.5.1.
It is moved by Counsel Larabie and seconded by Counsel St. Louis. It resolved that bylaw number 202474, being a bylaw of the West Nippising municipality to regulate and control keeping backyard chickens in the West Nippising municipality to force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Um, for questions or comments, we've gone through the process. Some of you were here for all of it, some of you were here for part of it, and some of you have not been here for any of it up to, up to date now. And over the course of a couple minute meetings, we provided feedback and direction to our planner, Ms. Willoughby. And with that direction, she has prepared a bylaw for our review. So I'll open the floor to questions or comments. Counsel Fatah?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've gone through the, the bylaw and I think all councils will have received a letter from a concerned citizen who raised some points that I had not fully considered and I think maybe we didn't fully consider when we discussed this the last time. The proposed bylaw bans butchering on people's properties. But there, it raises certain questions of what, what are people supposed to do with sick chickens? And I don't think we can expect people to take the chicken to the local vet and have it euthanized at a cost of a few hundred dollars. And, and sometimes I think it's probably best if you have a sick chicken to, to, to cull it on-site rather than transport it somewhere else. So it, you know, the, the bylaw also bans roosters, which I agree. But some people will have, will raise chicks. What do they do with the rooster chicks? And we, we don't deal with that. So, and I think effectively, the, the bylaw, the proposed bylaw we have will, will more or less ban raising chickens for meat. But, you know, the, the point I, I would make is there's not that much difference between butchering a chicken or deboning a store-bought chicken. You end up with some, some of the discarded waste in, in the, in the municipal waste system. So the bylaw says that dead stock should be disposed of in a sanitary manner. But how? Because we can't bury it, we can't incinerate it, we can't compost it, we can't dispose of it in municipal waste. So it leaves, begs the question, what are people supposed to do with the dead stock? Now, there's a question of manure also. And I don't think that maybe, I think that maybe banning the use of manure may not be sensible, considering the alternatives to use chemical fertilizers. But, you know, manure, I think the, the risk of bacteria in manure after it's been, you know, manure can't be put on your garden fresh, burn your plants. It has to be aged, has to be composted, and most of the bacteria probably miss a year with this process. But again, you know, we, we tell people that you can't use it, you can't throw it in the water or the lake, and you can't wait. So again, it's the same question, what are they supposed to do with the manure? So when I, and I read the, the guidelines, the provincial guidelines that were attached, and nowhere in there that I see that, that you shouldn't butcher chickens at home or that you shouldn't use them in your garden. So I think what I'm afraid is that it will leave people more confused than they were before we started. So I think I would propose that we go back and reconsider these points. Because as it stands now, you know, I would not be voting in favor of this bylaw until we can reconsider these points and, and, and deal with them, maybe in a more sensible way.
If you refer back to committee.
So if you refer, yeah, it's not deferring, it's referring back to committee. That's a motion.
So if you'd like to propose that, Counsel Fatah, I mean, we can continue on with this discussion here tonight, but if other members feel the same way, if you would propose that, it would be a motion to refer back to committee and it would come back at a future meeting. And I would probably recommend at that point that any other counselors that have kind of specific concerns that they would want addressed back in committee to reach out to, to the clerk and Ms. Willoughby so that appropriate briefing materials can be prepared. So if you did want to make a motion for, you can do it now if you'd like.
I can either do it now or if, if any other counselor wants to speak on it first, either way.
Counselor Nicol?
I do follow-up questions myself. So I would support Counsel Rand referring it.
Would you like to have your question so well?
I have a motion to refer and you speak to why you're referring it, that there's not, you'd like to give it more time than is the debate or on the referral itself. If you're going to debate the entire, you know, bylaw now, then you can have motions to amend or whatever. So if you're bringing it back to committee, I'd recommend that.
So I, I do agree with Mr. Barbo of if the will and council is to bring it back to committee for further discussion on a range of issues, then the best thing to do would be to make that motion to refer now and not get halfway into a debate that we're just going to have another couple of weeks from now. So.
In that case, yes, I would like to make.
Okay. Okay. So.
Counsel Nicol. Second.
Counselor Nicol, second. Okay. And I'll take questions or comments just on the motion to refer. Seeing none, all in favor of referral? That passes. Thank you. Okay. So item 6.5.2 just follows from our discussion at the, in committee on the Sport and Recreation Infrastructure Fund.
It is moved by Counsel St. Louis and seconded by Counsel Larabie. Whereas at the October meeting, October first meeting, council discussed the feasibility of applying for the Community Sport and Recreation Infrastructure Fund, to which council was agreeable. Be it resolved that council directs the Director of Community Services to submit an application for the Community Sport and Recreation Infrastructure Fund on behalf of the municipality of West Nippising.
Okay. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Next.
It is moved by Counsel Larabie and seconded by Counsel St. Louis. Whereas requests for quotations were sought for the facade repairs to the Werner Municipal Building and whereas five quotations were received. And whereas council concurs with the recommendation received, be it resolved that the quotation for the facade repairs to the Werner Municipal Building be awarded to Vanoss Building Group, being the lowest quotation meeting all specifications.
Okay. So this is a motion for, is questions or comments on that? Counsel Gony?
Just a comment, Madam Mayor. With the, the pricing that we have received to actually do the work on this facade, and we know this building needs additional work also, I would not recommend investing any current money and maybe looking at other options to service the current services offered at that current municipal building in Werner instead of to keep pumping money into a building that we know that's probably going to cost more than actually building something, most likely even you. So that's my comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Counsel Gony. Any other questions or comments?
I agree also.
Thank you. Okay. Other questions or comments before I put that to a vote? Okay, so all in favor of the award? That's defeated.
It is moved by Counsel St. Louis and seconded by Counsel Larabie. Be it resolved that council for the West Nippising municipality hereby declares the 35th Annual Children's Halloween Dance to be held on Saturday, October the 19th in Field and hosted by the Field Recreation Committee to be a municipally significant event.
Okay. So there is a request received by a user group and that was included in their agenda packages. Questions or comments on that request? Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay. And, you know, that, that does wrap up the meeting for this evening. I'm not going to hide any more support. I don't have one ready, so. Thank you all.
It is moved, it is moved by Counsel Larabie and seconded by Counsel St. Louis. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202475, being a bylaw of the West Nippising municipality to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held on October the first, 2024, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay. All those in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Counsel St. Louis and seconded by Counsel Larabie. Be it resolved that the meeting of council and committee in the whole held on October the first, 2024 be adjourned.
Okay. All in favor? Carrie?